Okay, we will move on to our agenda. We're going to move on to our agenda, item two A, approval of the meeting minutes from the October 20th, 2025 Planning Board Meeting. Purpose of this agenda is to consider approval of those meeting minutes, has everybody a chance to review, and if so, take any comments, concerns, corrections, or motions.
I move they be approved as written.
We've got a motion from Jay and a second from Barbara. Everybody know what we're voting on? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Alright, we will move on to item four A into our public hearing. So if anybody does want to speak up for one of the public hearings, if you would, please sign up right here at the podium, there's a little table there, if you please sign up with your name and address, and then when you get up to speak, please state your name and address, so we have it for the record. Also, it looks like there's a lot of you in the audience, and we'll try to get, we'll get through all of you, but if you do have the same concerns that somebody else has already said, we will probably understand those concerns, so we don't need to repeat things over and over again, so if you can like appoint somebody as like a spokesman for those issues, certainly we want to hear from you, but if you have, if everybody gets up and talks about the same issue, obviously we, we've kind of got that, and we understand that. The other thing is to just understand, not a lot, everybody goes to the public hearings and into these, is to understand the form here, is that we don't actually answer and engage in questions, if you have real specific questions after the public hearing, planning staff is over here, and then anything specifically related to the project, you'd have to get with the applicant itself. So I don't want you to get up here and start asking us a bunch of questions and thinking you're going to get feedback, so I just want to get that out of the way so that everybody's clear on how this is going to run. Alright, with that being said, we will get started with item four A, R A Z 2025-13, and further information provided by staff.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Chair. Good evening, Board. I am submitting the agenda abstract and supporting documents into the official record of the town. The first item before you tonight is R A Z 2025-13. It is a rezoning requested by Penny Allen with the New Horizons Academy at 7601 Perfoy Road, PIN number 066795819. The rezoning is a total of 1.85 acres from the residential agricultural zoning district to the corridor commercial conditional zoning district. Staff recommends approval of the proposed map amendment as it is reasonable and in the best interest of the public for the following reasons. Number one, the requested zoning map amendment is consistent with the 2040 Community Vision Land Use Plan classification of suburban commercial. Number two, the requested zoning district supports the L U P's policy 2.1, encourage infill development and redevelopment inside town limits. Number three, the requested zoning district supports the L U P's policy 2.6, encourage commercial development. Number four, the requested zoning district supports the L U P's policy 4.1, manage future growth and development in accordance with the priority infrastructure investment areas map. And number five, the proposed conditions offered as part of the petition align with the goals of the 2040 land use plan and effectively plan for the site's future development potential. I am able to answer any questions, and I believe our petitioner is also here tonight.
Alright, before we open up the public hearing, anybody on the board have any questions for staff? No? Alright, at this time, we will open up the public hearing, and I'll invite the applicant up for a statement.
Hi, my name is Ben Gilbertson. I'm the Business Development Manager for New Horizon Academy. I'm here to answer any operational questions you guys have, and then we also have Dan Miller, our Civil Engineer, who can answer any site-specific questions. I just want to say we're happy to be here, excited to be here. New Horizon Academy, if you haven't heard of us, we're a family-owned and operated childcare company. We've been around for over 50 years. My grandma actually started it in a church basement in 1971. So we have a lot of experience with childcare. We take care of children ages six weeks to five years old, and you know, childcare is a need across the nation that we see, but especially in high-growth communities such as Fuquay Marina, so we're excited to be here. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Alright Eva, I guess we're going to go with people that signed up to speak in favor of, I know that we don't really specify that, but, so we'll go ahead and go with the first name on the list.
Sounds good. We have Mike Matthews.
And if you could, when you do get up and speak, if you could let us know whether you're in favor or not of it.
I'm actually here, good evening everyone. I'm actually here in proxy for my mother-in-law. I've lived here in this town for, or worked in this town for 37 years.
Could you state your name and address, just so we have it?
Mike Matthews, 133 Blair Drive.
Thank you.
So Laura is, she lives at 514 Cardena School Road, which is in the Sexton Place subdivision. And like I said, I'm only speaking here from the experience of me being here in 37 years and, and seeing what's happening in and out of that subdivision. That is one of the poorest intersections that we have in Fuquay. And the first thing I think of when I hear small children, with the amount of traffic that's in that area, I just think this is not a very good plan. That's just my personal opinion. I worry about my mother-in-law coming in and out of that driveway, out of Sexton, just because that traffic is horrible. And if any of you guys go through that intersection, you know exactly what I'm talking about. I fear every day, when I leave my work at TE Connectivity on Perfoy Road, that I'm not going to get a call, that my mother, my mother-in-law has been in a very bad accident right there where she comes out of Sexton. We've got a two-lane there where people are trying to dodge and get over into other lane, and you know, these older people in this room that you see sitting right here behind me, they don't have the reflexes and the ability to pick up on a fast-moving car as quickly as other people can. And they'll be coming in that right lane, and I have people, I see them sitting in the lane next to them saying, yeah, come on over, come on over. So now we want to put kids in this very volatile area that I think is, is, is not a safe place for a, this type of operation. You know, that's just, I told her that I would come speak, she could not be here, and I apologize for that, she's actually in Tennessee. But I did want to note that, that, you know, I just, you know, want to make sure that the right decisions are made here, because I do see this as one of the worst intersections in Fuquay, bar none. And it, and with the new subdivisions out on Pass Holland, that's the next intersection. It's just, it is horrible. And until we get a little better infrastructural around to be able to do something like this, I think that that has to happen first, before this is, goes any further.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Alright, so we're going to go ahead and address this too, so we're not going to clap and boo, and this is not the form for that, okay? We're just here to conduct business, we obviously want to hear your, your concerns. We're obviously not a biased board one way or the other, but no clapping, no booing, none of that stuff, okay? Alright Eva, next person.
The next person on the list is Jean Myers.
And again, when you come up, if you could state your name and address, just before we have it for the record, and I'm going to go with the first person was in, not in favor.
Not in favor?
I'm not opposed to daycare, because we need daycares and we need good daycares. But I feel like hazard at that intersection with any more traffic turning on to Old Sexton Place unless the, the community and the Department of Transportation is going to make a change in the way the traffic flow is there. We already have U-turners constantly going to Bojangles at our street. The gal who lives in the first house is a nurse. She goes out to the accidents to make sure no one's hurt, because there are so many. And you can check with the Police Department about that. But it is so dangerous, and to think that loads of little children are going to be coming in there with their moms or their dads, it's, it's hazardous, the way it is, unless something changes in the D O T area.
Could you please state your name and address for me?
Joanne Myers, 1616 Old Sexton Place, Fuquay.
Thank you, and welcome to your first Planning Board meeting.
The next person we have on the list signed up is Chris Mullin.
Hi, I'm Chris Mullin, and my address is 5225 Wade Nash, and I'm speaking as a property owner in Old Sexton Place. And I can't really say that I'm speaking against this, but I do have some thoughts that I'd like to share. I'd like to be unbiased about it and take an engineering approach. So that's what I'm trying to do. If I look at it from the, the perspective of putting a daycare in there, I see a beautiful commercial site, but I'll have to say, in my opinion, it's marginal for maximum success for that type of facility. And the reason is, the location, the close proximity to the intersection with Main Street. That's the reason. So I think the opportunity for the most success for the business owner and for everybody else would have, would be to have an innovative-type site plan, where the discharge was further, as far, as far south as it could be, away from Main Street. The closer people attempt to get onto Perfoy Road to Main Street, the more risk there is, and I'm not even going to try to describe what that is, but other than say it's chaotic and it varies quite a bit. So if you haven't experienced it at different days and different times, you're really not going to understand it, and I would have to wonder if the applicants have done the, the due diligence to see exactly what, what's going on there, because we are talking about safety of children that'll be coming in and out. The other thought is that one of the principles of planning and zoning that sometimes comes into play would be to try to soften the blow of commercial where it meets residential. And so in this case, if traffic from a daycare is, is routed or attempted to be routed down Old Sexton, where there are about 40, I think about 40 houses in there, that's the only way they have to come out onto Perfoy. So if we put additional daycare traffic, at certain times of the day, it's going to be a piece of cake, they can just roll on out. But it varies greatly, and there'll be some of them that'll be deterred from actually being customers due to their schedule. It'll work out great for others. But I see backup of traffic on Old Sexton trying to get out. So I would just ask that you take that into account to try to soften the blow on the residential, if you would. So thank you.
Thank you. Alright Eva?
The next person we have signed up is Darlene, forgive me for the pronunciation, Rutzey? Rutz?
Good evening. My name is Darlene Brutes, and I'm 1625 Old Sexton Place in Fuquay. I'm a property owner for going on three years, and I love the area, I love the neighborhood, and the neighbors are so friendly. And I'm a caregiver for my husband. He has serious health problems, and I got the house, my daughter and son-in-law found it, and they said, oh my God, it's going on the market soon. And she ran down there, I bought the house, not even going inside to see it, because I came from Ohio. And safety issues, why I moved down here, besides being with family, is I don't have to deal with ice and snow and bad weather. But oh my God, the first week I moved in, the neighbors told me, be careful going out of the property on top of Perfoy, because it's very dangerous. And boy, were they right. And my daughter said, oh my gosh, Ma, I don't even want you driving at night. Now, everybody's saying how dangerous it is. I can't imagine family members with small kids trying to get to a daycare. I know my granddaughter lives in Lillington, and she's got two small kids, and she, not saying she's a bad driver, but she's got a smart car and everything, and turning and all that, you know, but it just makes me nervous, because the kids are either crying, or they need something, and you know, she's got to pay attention. I can't imagine parents driving to this area here and dealing with the traffic and the safety. Now, I've seen two accidents right here at that corner, and I was just shaking. And then I see people turning around, I'm not used to U-turns, you know, I was, I said, oh my gosh, Tammy, I almost got hit. And I was shaking, but I, you know, it just, it just doesn't seem right that we're going to deal with more traffic, and it's not, it's not a piece of cake, it's safe, no matter if it's early in the morning, because we go to a lot of doctor's appointments. My husband has stage four kidney disease, so he's a nervous wreck, he doesn't drive, but he's a nervous wreck, watching me dodge through this and that, and just, I just think it'd be safer if the little kids would be in a different corner, a different part of the town. And then I think you guys should consider putting a traffic light here, or just a little small traffic light, because it's, no matter if I go way over, or, you know, and people are sometimes helpful, they'll let you through, but oh my God, it's just so dangerous that I got to go all the way around down by Coles and come up that way to fit into my street. But enough said, but I appreciate you guys listening to me. Thank you.
Thank you. Eva, before you call the next one, I'm going to ask if, 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 if it's traffic and safety that you, you need to voice, I think, I think we've, we've kind of got that one. We understand that one pretty well. So I would really appreciate if, if there's something other than that, certainly you're welcome to come up, but if it's going to be traffic and safety, I'm probably going to cut you off, you know, and not let you run over, just given that we want to be, you know, respectful of everybody's time, and we understand that traffic and safety is obviously a, a big-ticket item with this one.
The next person we have signed up is George Beasley.
Good evening, Board. 1416 Old Sexton Place, and name's George Beasley. I won't beat the traffic horse to death, we all know what, what goes on over there. We moved in this neighborhood almost a year ago, next month will be a year ago. And as you can see, Lisa and I, apart from a couple others, may be the youth group in this neighborhood, and we love it. It's a beautiful place. The daycare, I'm for. I know I'm not enough, but I understand it, and the inevitable is that it's going to be its own commercial. I feel like that's going to happen. Commercial's here, commercial's here, Milano's commercial is just a matter of time. So I think for us, the best option is not a mattress store, it's not a Chinese restaurant, not a Mexican restaurant, it's not a hair salon. A daycare is a pretty good option for us, and I've stated that before on the Zoom meeting. The only issue I have with it is, this is our opportunity as a board here to blend commercial into residential. This neighborhood is 25 years old. So how can we take it and blend it in to where it matches so good that you're not even going to know it's there, except from the highway? The commercial property adjacent to us, bad, bad. It looks like Antarctica over there at night, because they put these bright lights that shine in the houses in the neighborhood behind it. There's only a 15-foot buffer there. What I'm asking for, for me and our residents in our neighborhood, is a minimum of a 30-foot buffer between our property line and where they're, where they're proposing to put this fence and the evergreens. And also, make sure, guys, that we look at the stormwater runoff here. According to the, what I'm looking at, as far as the plot, and I, I'm not an engineer, I know we have one here, we have several in the town, but it looks like there's more than 70% of impervious land being brought up by this asphalt, by the building, and we got a little playground over here next to us. The only other thing I'll say, woo, this goes fast.
It does, doesn't it?
Is I would like to see the road, the owners of the property, that little side street, they said the town wants this road dumping into Old Sexton. If we can just do away with that, maybe direct that road back towards the other commercial property and back on the Perfoy, right in, right out. That's, that's the way of the town, right in, right out. What the road does, it allows a left in and then a right out. So it looks like that lane, that road could be two-way right there. It comes right past my door, 50 feet from my door, my back door is the same. That's all I got, man.
I appreciate it.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
The next person we have signed up is Ms. Ann Miller.
Hello, Ann Miller, from 517 Cardena School Road. My property-
Ma'am, you got to face us. Yeah, you got to face us.
My property is, would be-
And ma'am, and the microphone too, as well.
My property would be directly behind the parking area, okay? My problem is stormwater. I already had it in my, underneath my house this year. We didn't even have a huge storm this year. We had a couple of cloud bursts, we had some, we had a little bit more rain this spring for sure, and literally, I had to, I had to have, I had problems with my, with my air handler for my air conditioning in my house. I dug trenches, if you go by my house, you'll see trenches in the side, my side yard, to try to direct the water, because the stormwater area is right where it dumps into the, the, the town thing, it's right at my driveway. So it literally goes in between my house and 521, which is the next-door house. So that's a problem, because you're going to, they're planning on impervious surface, just beyond that, the water's going to run even faster. So there has to be some way to try to stop that water in a way, in some way to help direct it a bit differently. So that's a, that's one of my issues, besides the traffic issue.
Fair enough.
Yeah, so.
Thank you.
But I also am not, totally not in favor, I would echo what George Beasley said. I think I would like to direct a little bit, I actually have educational experience with early childhood myself, I'm, I'm a long-time educator. I know that, you know, parents, young parents need this sort of option in our, in our town, a good one, and I read about them, and they, they are indeed a good one. But, you know, we also want to make sure they can, they can fit in well, and so that's kind of why I'm here, so.
Thank you for being here.
The only other person is Dan Miller, but I believe he's the, yes.
Okay. Dan, unless you want to come up and say in favor or against, I think we can, we can hold until we have questions. Okay. Alright, I'm going to give everybody one more opportunity to, that didn't sign up, if you'd like to come over and speak in favor or against. And make sure if you, if you haven't signed up, please make sure you sign the sheet that's right there next to the podium.
Sure, I didn't know there was a sign-up. Hi, I'm Wes Kletter, 513 Cardena School Road. We moved in July of 2020- We moved in July of 2020. In August of 2020, my truck got totaled, I got T-boned trying to pull into my neighborhood. I trusted somebody that was waving me on to pull into my neighborhood and didn't see the car coming up in the right lane. Unfortunately, he T-boned me and luckily him and his daughter were safe and so was I, but I learned really quickly that it's a pretty chaotic intersection. I won't beat the traffic to death, but I will agree with George. I do think that of all the options, childcare, you know, whatever type of establishment beats out all the other options. But I do also agree that dumping that traffic out onto Old Sexton to have them merge in with us trying to get out of our neighborhood. I have a day job, it's already hard enough for me to get out during any kind of peak hours. My daughter, she's highly involved at the Fuquay Arts Center, she dances in 10 different classes. My wife and my daughter need to get to those classes. And oftentimes, they have to make a right out and make a complete loop around Lake Stone just to get onto Honeycut so that they can make it to the arts center. Takes them about 25 minutes sometimes and, you know, I could run to the arts center quicker than that. So that's really my concerns about it, is that the, the intersection is just a chaotic mess. And if we're going to dump more people out and try to get them out of there, it's just going to be frustrating at the least for everybody. And then nobody's addressed the fact that they're going to be putting a Lowe's Foods in right up at the corner of Honeycut, and I don't anticipate that's going to make the traffic any lighter in that region. So yeah, I would second the motion to try to find an opportunity to put a, a traffic light somewhere close to Comfort Inn or somewhere between Main Street and Honeycut because it's, it's already a mess and it's not going to get any better. Thank you for listening to me.
Thank you very much. All right, anybody else? All right, at this time, we're going to close the public hearing and bring it back to the board for discussion. And questions? Any specific questions from the board, comments?
Yeah. So when they're, when the petitioner's applying and I guess with the process with the planning department, you know, traffic at this location, obviously, it's already congested intersection. Adding more, you know, looking at the Lowe's food going in there to what's required of them or what's the, the math look like when planning staff is kind of preparing for this and saying, hey, you've got to have ingress and egress here versus there. And also, you know, I'm, I'm sure that math changes based on the amount of foot traffic coming in and out of the business. If it's, you know, said something like 121 kids potentially, that's going to be a lot different than, you know, maybe some other type of business where it has traffic throughout the day trickling in or trickling out. How does that look on planning staff's end?
Sure, so that, the, the traffic is really analyzed at the site plan submittal. So this is rezoning, so we've not seen a submitted site plan at this time. There are a couple of elements that are coming, going to come into play. One is our comprehensive transportation plan, the CTP. So any project will be required to do frontage improvements, so that's both along Purfoy Road and Old Sexton Place, to the CTP future road sections. So that could be adding curb and gutter, adding, you know, widening lanes, dedicating right-of-way, building sidewalks, those kind of things. That's the first step. Obviously, the engineering department also has specific specifications for intersection and driveway spacing, things like that. So that's going to decide where their driveways go. The next thing is, is that any proposed development that has over 100 peak trips or 1,000 daily trips, peak hour trips or daily trips, is going to trigger a traffic impact analysis. And from what I understand, that is already underway on this project. And that is going to look at the specific impacts that this project makes to the surrounding roads for the use as well as the intersections. And that will make, that analysis in itself also makes some assumptions and it makes some suggestions of what improvements could be done. Now, what's important to determine is, is that looks at this impact and doesn't necessarily solve, you know, one project cannot solve already existing traffic issues, right? It would be really nice if they could, but it doesn't work that way. So it will look at this project's impact on, on the situation. Now, the next thing is Purfoy Road is an NC DOT road. So really, the third leg of that stool is, is any driveways or improvements along Purfoy Road are going to need NC DOT encroachments and driveway permits and such. So that TIA will also be analyzed by NC DOT and they're going to make some requirements or standards and, and set the tone, will it require turn lanes, will it require D-Selt lanes, you know, what, where can those driveways be spaced, what driveways will be allowed and not be allowed? So there's kind of three things that will be looked at. Another thing that the Lowe's Foods was mentioned, along with that Lowe's Foods going in in Academy Village, will be the, the extension and connection of East Academy Street over to Lake Stone Commons. So we are hopeful that that will also create another east-west route across town and take some of that pressure off people having to scoot up and get onto 401. So obviously, until that happens, we don't know what the, you know, the relief will be, will look like. But hopefully, you know, the more options and routes that you have, the more different directions those cars can go and relieve some of that pressure.
Yeah, thank you.
So the traffic impact analysis is not yet complete, is that correct?
That is, yes, it is required and will be submitted with the site plan.
But it's not complete for today, for the rezoning?
Do you normally require the TIA for the rezoning level or is that normally something that comes later?
It's required with either preliminary subdivision or site plan.
Have you seen anything from DOT on this? Has the applicant submitted anything from DOT, even as a courtesy look? Because it looks like, I mean, the zoning, we give the option to submit zonings with, like master plans. It looks like on here it's checked no. So, I mean, there is an option to check it with a master plan, because I mean, I know everybody's referencing a site, which I'm assuming is the, the little exhibit that was shown in the neighborhood meeting report. But there's not been a site plan actually submitted with this rezoning, correct?
There has not, and the applicant could probably speak to now. I know they have had communications with our engineering department as far as, as getting their TIA going, so they could probably speak to whether if they've had any conversations with NC DOT or not.
I think it'd be helpful if the applicant can come up and talk to that about, you know, what conversations have been had with DOT, what kind of restrictions have they, have they talked to you about? I think it's important for everybody to understand that it is kind of, it is, it is state law that we have to have access to properties off of some public thoroughfare and this one happens to sit at a corner. So I mean, to say that they can't have access off either one is, is not something that this board can really base our findings off of for a zoning case. But I do think it'd be important to understand what those conversations look like, if you've had a TIA scoping meeting, what intersections you're required to look at and, and where you think you're at with that TIA.
So my name is Dan Miller, I'm at 1413 Squire Ridge Drive in Fuquay Marina and I'm site engineer for this project. I could tell you that there have not been any preliminary discussions with NC DOT on this project at this point. You know, we do know that there is some required widening along Purfoy Road, right-of-way dedication as well as a turn lane onto Old Sexton. There's also going to be a requirement for some improvements along Old Sexton Road once you turn into Old Sexton, such as curb and gutter and streetlights. What other questions did you have?
I mean, so, could you talk to the TIA? And it says like the TIA is underway, which means you've had a scoping meeting, correct?
Yeah, so that's my understanding. We are not the traffic consultant for the project, however, he's part of the team and my understanding is he's taking counts, they're taking counts either this week or last week, give, give or take a week. So counts are just getting started. My understanding is there has been a scoping meeting with the town on that already.
But you don't know how many intersections or what intersections were included in that one yet?
Do you know, Ben?
No, I don't know.
Have not heard that information yet?
I will say that we have done traffic analysis on past and current schools we have, not in Fuquay Marina, but in other municipalities. Typically, parents, you know, it's not like a start time and an end time, it's not like elementary school. So you basically have a, parents filtering in throughout the morning from, you know, we operate 6:30 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. So typically, parents will come in 6:30 a.m. to, you know, 9:30 a.m., something like that. Those are going to be more of our peak hours, just when you would typically drop your child off. And then in the evenings, you know, 3:00 to 6:00 p.m., that'll be kind of the cadence. There as well, our peak, peak number of visitors is around 60, it would be around 60 vehicles in, from like 7:30 to 8:30 a.m. and then 4:30 to 5:30 as well, so.
So your, your peak kind of coincides with the natural peak of traffic?
Yep, you know, as you're dropping your kid off, going to work.
Makes sense.
Yep.
But around 60 is kind of where you're living as far as, for your specific daycare?
For this size school, it would be about 60, just basing it off of, you know, some of our current schools. The other thing that I wanted to keep in mind is typically childcare is not 100% occupied. It's very rare for that to happen. Usually, they're around 60 to 70% occupied. And so when we're looking at, you know, traffic counts based off of capacity, for example, probably not the best indicator. You'd have to use about a 60 to 70% occupancy rate to really get what it probably will be.
I think we would default to what DOT would require on something like that. Okay, anybody else have any questions on the traffic piece of it for the applicant? So we don't make them sit down and come back up.
The other thing that I wanted to mention too, real quick, is we will have a right-in, right-out on Purfoy Road. So most of our customers are going to be using that. And if traffic is, you know, and, you know, I've seen, I've driven the site too, it's not great, but you're not, most of our customers are going to be utilizing that right-in, right-out. They're not going to be going to Old Sexton and trying to turn left and they're not going to be going to Old Sexton and trying to turn right.
So kind of two follow-up questions to that. One, how do you know you're going to have a right-in, right-out on Purfoy if you haven't had any conversations with DOT to know if they'll allow you to have that?
So we've submitted, we've been in conversations with the planning department a little bit and we've submitted site plans and they've told us what they expect to see at that, at the site here. And so that's a requirement that has been made of us.
Pam, could you address that? Because I mean, that's a DOT road, not a town road.
Right, so there was, I believe, a pre-development meeting back in June.
Yep.
And we, we did suggest that it would probably be limited to a right-in, right-out, but the conversations would need to be had with DOT.
Right, because I mean, DOT could clearly tell you that you could only have a right-in. I mean, so that's why I was asking if you've had any conversations with DOT on this, because they could, they could limit it even further than that. And judging by the number of driveways that's out there, I would certainly expect that. And I guess question two would be, have you reached out to the property to your south about cross-access and potentially, you know, partnering with them and maybe saving some of the money that you would do on a driveway and, and figuring out what you guys could do to create a safer, kind of a shared drive? It looked like on that sketch in the neighborhood meeting that there was shown to be a cross-access to the south, but it looks like they don't have one to the north.
Yep, yep, and that was another suggestion. And so we incorporated that into our site plan. We haven't reached out to the property owner to the south at this point.
Okay, were you planning to do that or?
Um, we can, you know, we, we're certainly, we want to make this as seamless as possible for the neighbors and for our customers too, you know. I will say, you know, the property to the south, they have a right-in, right-out, so I don't know if that would really solve much in terms of traffic, unless we don't get a right-in, right-out on Purfoy, for example, then that could be more of a conversation.
Yeah, I think that's where your TIA will come in and help you out there. Okay, any other questions? All right, thanks, guys. Any other discussions on traffic or any other particulars?
Just a quick question to staff. One of the first speakers spoke about would like to see infrastructure before the development and would, is this an area that infrastructure is planned for or is it expecting development to take care of the infrastructure needs that are impacted for that development?
So looking at the engineering department's website, there have been actually intersection improvements north and south of this already that have been done. I'm not aware of any current town projects that will be improving the stretch of Purfoy Road. So generally speaking, we do rely on development to kind of pay-to-play and do the improvements when they come in.
Pam, how long has this project, or this property been planned or land use planned as commercial?
So this has been slated on the land use plan as commercial since 2005.
Wow, okay.
What is the current setback requirement for the property on the east side? Where they're going to have a fence and, and evergreens, what's that current setback?
So, commercial properties only have, so this, this quarter commercial has a front setback only, that's a 20 feet, that's a building setback. On a corner property, both frontages, Old Sexton Place and Purfoy will have that 20-foot building setback. Now, what they do have on the east facing the Old Sexton Place, the subdivision would be a 15-foot landscape buffer. So that will serve also as a building setback as nothing can be constructed, no parking lot, no buildings can be constructed in that landscape buffer.
And it looked like they had an additional condition about some evergreen trees and a fence along that scene, like that eastern border?
Right, so one of their conditions is to install a fence. That fence would be required to be on the inside edge of that landscape buffer, so the full benefit of that buffer and vegetation would be to the, facing the neighbors. The land, the type B buffer does have a large tree requirement. In this case, that will be fully required to be fully evergreen as per their volunteered condition.
Okay, so not an additional row, just the trees that are in that required buffer?
Yes, so that is a combination of trees and shrubs that will have fully evergreen trees.
But the shrubs could be, you know, they could be deciduous, they could be whatever, right? Based off the way that condition is.
It's a combination based on the buffer requirement, yes.
I think it's also important, we heard some, some concerns about stormwater management. I think that's a, an ever-growing concern that we hear a lot. So I think it would be helpful if you could speak to some of those, like the requirements that we have, and I know engineering's not here, but I think it's helpful to understand that, you know, at the rezoning level, obviously, we don't have a full set of construction plans to look at, but that no matter what it's rezoned to, it still has to meet the intent of the ordinance and what's in written in the ordinance.
Right, so all disturbance over one acre does trigger both stormwater and erosion control, and that is something that is reviewed by the town per the, the state has given us the authority. So in all likelihood, one thing that was not shown on their sketch that was presented at the neighborhood meeting was a stormwater facility. There is always the option to put that underground under the parking facilities, I don't know if that's what they have planned. But the, the concept that needs to be demonstrated in that stormwater, those calculations are basically the rate, right? As raindrops fall, is that they are going to be the same pre-development rate of, of raindrops falling off that property will be maintained at that same rate. So they will hold whatever rainfall they get and, and let it go at the same rate that it is pre-development. And so that's what will have to be demonstrated and maintained, whether that be, you know, through a stormwater facility, an open pond kind of thing, or an underground facility.
Any more questions from the board?
Was a, was, were any kind of conditions discussed with the petitioner and, and the town? Was that, were there ever any conditions discussed other than the, the buffer?
So the, the other conditions that they've offered have to do with limiting the uses. They basically went through the list of, of quarter commercial uses and, and specifically allowed certain uses that they thought were applicable to the property.
This is one of those tricky ones, guys, because largely the use is pretty good use, but I'll be honest with you, I'm, it's hard to vote on something and approve something without having any feedback from DOT. I think that's a little, that's a little disappointing to not have any answers to that, to not know what intersections are being analyzed. I mean, not to have the traffic consultant here, that's, that's, that's hard for us to, that's a hard ask. You know, not having any discussions with the south property owner. None of those questions, that's, that's a hard ask of, of this board, given that we all do live here, so we, we're very well aware of that intersection and very well aware of the concerns that we heard tonight. So I, for one, I'm like, I don't dislike the use, I think it's a good use, I think daycares are a, a real need in this town, but I, I have a hard time supporting it right at this moment without having any more documents to go off of and anything to look at to know what it is we're looking at. That's just kind of where I'm sitting at.
Can we table it?
Could you table it? Yes, the, the planning board could table it for one meeting. I'm not usually a fan of us tabling things because I don't purposely like to hold people up, but that is a motion that is available to us. If we would like that, and this may be a good one for that, to, to table it and give advice to the applicant that they bring us some more information to, to look at. You know, I, I think this one is a good candidate to have a master plan with it to, to identify maybe those driveway locations and pin down some of those things so that we can actually have a visual to go with it. I don't think anybody on this board is opposed to the use, at least not from what I'm seeing, but I think we all understand the concerns out there with traffic.
I was going to say, I feel like that might be, you know, potentially the best path forward. And kind of like you mentioned, I have concerns about it and I feel like my conflict is, I do feel like it's probably the best use of this. my conflict is, I do feel like it's probably the best use of this property, but at the same time, any use of this property seems to be, have a negative influence on the traffic in that area, whether it's remained at residential agriculture and, you know, something, and that zoning goes there, it's going to have a negative impact just as much as, as this will have. And I, I feel bad that that would be passed on to the petitioner when, you know, it should be a larger solution, that's going to be a, a more expensive, larger solution for the town that, you know, nobody really wants to undergo. But I do think maybe tabling might be the best option, so we can get more information, and everybody can have a little bit better of a, a idea of how they want to go.
Yeah.
Will we have any information? We can only table it for a month?
That's all we can do.
What if the information's not back?
The town board can always take it from there.
Yeah, James, we have to make a vote within what?
That's right.
Sixty days?
You basically just have one hearing left.
So, you know, I mean, I guess, you know, what we could do is, is that there could be a motion to table it and ask the applicant to come back with some more information. If that doesn't happen, then we'll have to make that vote. We will have to vote next meeting regardless.
And, and the applicant can voluntarily ask that it be pushed off.
That's true.
That it can't get us further out if we needed to, but the board on its own can only do one.
I would just ask if the board does decide to table, to be specific as to what additional information you all would like to see next time the item is considered, specific to whether it be traffic or any other item. I would just like to make that, from the staff's perspective, just make that clear, so we can work with the petitioner to bring whatever information.
Pam, is there an option with the rezoning that's not necessarily a master plan, but that could be an exhibit that gives us an idea of something? Like that says, hey, we've talked to DOT, driveways could be in this location, it's not necessarily tying into anything, but something that gives us a visual?
So obviously, they could submit the results of the TIA and potentially condition any improvements that were required or requested.
Okay. Well, I think that's up to the applicant. I think what we're looking for, and I guess what I would give guidance to is what we're looking for is, is some feedback on what it is the TIA scoping meeting came out of it. Mary, now, we have no idea whether you're investigating just Main Street and Perfoy, if you're, how far you're going, what intersections you're looking at. We have no idea what you've talked to as far as driveways, like, to my point, I, I think, and, and as a business owner, I would be cautious to, to, that you assume that you can get a write-in, write-out on Perfoy. And, and knowing what DOT, at least having some feedback from them, obviously, it's not official until you make a driveway permit, but at least to have some indication of what they've told you, so that, you know, we can make an educated decision on our, on our side. I just don't think we have enough information at this point as far as the traffic goes from that. And I think anything you could do visually to show us what you think you're going to do from driveways would be, would be helpful for this board. But I, I'll leave it up to the board for, for a motion on that. Is that specific enough, Jim, or do you need?
Is it reasonable, though? Are we, are we going to have this information in thirty days?
I don't think you'd have a full TIA, no, but I think you should, I mean, if, if they're, if they're counting cars right at this moment, I've got to imagine the scoping meeting has been held.
There could still be sixty to ninety days out before the report's done. I, I, I don't, I think, I think I'm going and, and not tabling it, but denying it, and the reason why I'm thinking is that this is just, this is a little unicorn in this town, that we know that there's a lot of things that are going to happen to the south of this, development's going to happen to the west of it, it's going to provide a different connection, but we just don't know the timing of all of that. And so are we looking at those improvements will be made with these other developments in the other area within a, a short amount, a reasonable, reasonable amount of time while this site is being developed? Or are those projects, could they be ten years down the road? And so this site is really not going to see any benefit of any transportation improvements from all around for quite some time.
Well, specifically, the, the Lowe's grocery store is under construction, as is that Academy Street extension, so that's currently under construction. So that, that's not a ten-year build-out, I know they're anxious to get both of those. Those are both approved subdivision and site plans, so those are both currently under construction.
It's also dependent on if people, kind of like we were talking about earlier, do they use those roads in that manner, you know, which we kind of assume they will, hopefully, people are going to pick, pick the passive, half of least resistance when they're going around, but you also can't guarantee that people won't continue to use Perfoy and have to go through Lake Stone Village Commons and all that too. So I mean, I think to your point, ten years, we'll have a road within ten years, we may not have a full impact of, of what, what that impact's going to be in ten years.
Yeah, it's kind of the hard thing is that, you know, you have this little piece of property, but they can't solve.
It can't, right.
The, the, the growth that this town has, has seen and...
And the reality is, is this has been identified as future commercial use for twenty years, and we now have an applicant that, that wants to rezon this property and, and put a use on it that, that they see is the highest and best use of that property. We, and what they're, what they're presenting fits all of our guidelines, it meets all of our guidelines. Yeah, we, I would like to see a little bit more information, but it's not required. My, my recommendation to the petitioner would be to see how difficult this decision would be for this board and see the amount of people, your neighbors, that, that support the use, but maybe don't love the ideas of, of some, some of your ideas. I think of the, that thirty-foot buffer that was proposed, you know, that, maybe you can't do thirty, but maybe you can do twenty or twenty-five. It's inevitable this is going to be a commercial property. What goes there is the question and, and kind of where, where the, the traffic flows, so to speak, that, that's kind of the, the question mark right now. I don't think we're going to have that answer in thirty days. Might have some more insight, but the answer's not going to be there. I would have a hard time denying this, just simply because this is, this is an identified commercial property and has been identified for twenty years. It's hard, but, you know, that's kind of where my, my thought process is at this point.
Yeah, I, I hear what you're saying, I don't disagree with you, but at the same time, I think it's, if we ignore the safety aspect and the transportation aspect of a zoning, I don't know that we're necessarily doing our, our response, our, we're pulling all our responsibilities.
No, I agree, and I, I hear you on that, but it, it also kind of goes back to what, what can we require somebody that has a one-point, whatever it was, acre lot? I mean, what can we require them to, to solve the massive issue of that stretch of Perfoy? I mean, it...
For, for me, I think it's driveway locations personally. I think, I mean, you're going to have to have something there, I mean, something's going to go there, and any, anything that goes there is going to, I mean, if you've got a bucket that's full of water, it's going to tip it over, right?
Hundred percent, hundred percent.
I think driveway locations is a, and having some discussions with the DOT on what that looks like, because I mean, honestly, those discussions could change whether the daycare is a, is a good use. Is it even feasible or not, right? I mean, if it doesn't, if it makes it inconvenient for you to get your, your parents in and out, it may not be a feasible option. So to me, I think having some of that feedback, which I think you probably could get in thirty days, but that's just my personal opinion. I, I don't dislike the use, I don't disagree with you, I think it's, it's been commercially planned for twenty years, I don't see why we wouldn't continue to do that, and it makes sense, but...
I would also caution the petitioner, regardless of how tonight turns out, when you go for a town board, anytime we have a lot of discussion about an, an agenda item at the planning board level, there tends to be even a lot more at the town board level, and they do read our minutes and go back and watch the video and look at the discussion, and, you know, I think it would move the petitioner to also address some of these challenges in between it leaving here in whatever form it does and appro, and approaching the town board, because they're going to want to see some answers to some of the questions that we may have.
Yeah.
Would the petitioner be interested in requesting this to be tabled would be a question I have, just...
Is that something we can ask them, or is that something we just need to make a motion on, James?
We can ask them if they want to voluntarily...
Put you on the spot.
That'll be to the December fifteenth meeting.
Now, before he does this, let's just, full disclosure, if he requests to table it, are we still required to vote on it in December, or could we do? So no matter what, whether we table it, whether he tables?
If he tables it, we don't. If he tables it, we don't.
Okay. So I just want to make sure he understands that too.
He could demand an answer if he doesn't want to voluntarily table it.
Right, right. I just want to make sure that he understands all, everything that, you know, we have to provide, so if you, you request to table it, we could still table it in December, but...
The reasoning, the reasoning I ask that, just so you understand, it's not, it's not the use, it's not, it's, has nothing to do with what y'all are planning to do, it's to give you a little bit more time to come back with some answers. If we table it, it gives you thirty days, and that's pretty much it. You table it, you...
If I, if I request it, it's...
It still gives you until the next meeting, but if you don't have it done within that next meeting, we're not required to vote on it, is my understanding.
We would, we would have, we could table it.
We would have to table it.
But we would not be required.
Yeah, the minute we table it, the next meeting, you got, we got a vote.
But if he tables it, we don't.
So that'll give us two meetings.
Gives you sixty days essentially.
Yep. Well, you know, I'll take a minute to answer some of the questions too, but number one for safety, we're going to have playgrounds that are fully enclosed, you know, you don't have to worry about kids running out into the street, your parents bring the kids into the school, walk them in, walk them out, so that's just one point I wanted to make. I think that it would, I think that it would be good for us to table it, because like you said, it could impact the feasibility of what we want to do on that site too, if we don't have a write-in, write-out on Perfoy. So I would say, I would request to table it then.
So James, do we need to make a motion based on that?
We typically, if the petitioner requests a continuance or a tabling, do we even have to, Pam?
We don't even meet, it's tabled on the agenda, and we move on, we don't even talk about it.
That's right. I don't think we need to have a vote unless it's board, unless it's the board that's making the decision.
We've already closed the public hearing.
So we, can we specifically, to December fifteenth?
Yes, specifically say that. You need to specifically say, I request tabling to the planning board meeting in December fifteenth, twenty twenty-five.
I, I request to table it to the planning board meeting on December fifteenth, twenty twenty-five.
There you go. All right.
Thank you.
We will move on then. We'll move on to other business. Item five A, twenty twenty-six planning board meeting schedule. Purpose of this agenda item is to consider the setting the planning board's regular meeting schedule for twenty twenty-six calendar year. Further information provided by staff.
All right. Tonight, we're presenting the recommended twenty twenty-six planning board meeting schedule for you guys to consider. It follows the same typical schedule that we always have, the third Monday of every month, with the exception of January, which usually conflicts with the Martin Luther King Jr. holiday. So we have moved that one, but everything else sticks to the same third Monday of the month, and I am available to answer any questions.
Any questions for staff?
I thought we scheduled this to, for it to be ongoing.
Yeah, I thought we didn't have to vote on the Martin Luther King one anymore.
No, we don't have to vote on the Martin Luther King, you don't have to vote on the Martin Luther King one anymore.
You just vote on the schedule as a whole.
Yes.
Got it, just the whole schedule, whole year.
I'll make a motion to adopt the proposed twenty twenty-six meeting schedule for the town Fuquay Marina Planning Board.
Second.
Which one of you wants it?
Nolan.
All right, we got a motion, I'm gonna say my Nolan. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We will move to item six A, planning staff report. Purpose of this agenda item is to receive information on the disposition of the planning